We're just about ready to start. I just want to thank everyone for being here tonight. It's, uh, we're not allowed to start before 6:00 PM for our scheduled meeting, but I see the magic clock on the wall is now reading six double oh. So, uh, at this time, we'll call the city council meeting of June, uh, sorry, August the 18th, 2025 to order. And at this time, uh, we would like to invite Pastor Todd Coteau of the Park Avenue Church of Christ to come forward and, uh, give us our invitation for the evening. Pastor?
Let's pray. Father God, we give you thanks for this day. We give you thanks for this city. Uh, Father, we thank you for being our God, our Creator, for living in us and among us. Father, thank you for all the people that serve this city and, uh, the way that you have protected us and guided us, the rich history that we have. And we pray your continued hand of guidance on us. Father, thank you for this council. Pray they may be with them this evening. Give them, uh, clear minds and pure hearts as they deliberate the business of the day. Father, thank you for the great gifts that you've given to us in your Son Jesus Christ, a great hope that we have through him. It's in Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. And Police Chief Mike Gudel, if you'll come forward, he's going to help us lead the pledge of allegiance.
Please commit the pledge to our nation's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, for God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored to Texas flag, the nation's allegiance to the Texas, one state, God, one indivisible.
Okay, you're welcome to be seated. Thank you, gentlemen, for helping to start our meeting. It is, uh, first of all, let me announce this. Uh, Councilman Josh Massey is on the screen with us tonight. He's joining us telephonically or electronically, uh, for the meeting. So, we do have a quorum. Uh, Dr. Court writes out today, and then Josh is on the screen. So, uh, we have a full house tonight. Uh, at this time, it's an honor. I'm gonna step downstairs, and, uh, we've got quite a little fun evening tonight. A great, uh, honor for our community, and it's, uh, our pleasure to have, uh, the Johnson family here, Michelle Lemming of the Texoma Health Foundation, Texoma Community Foundation, excuse me, glad to have you here, and then, uh, former Mayor Jared Johnson. So, um, Tom and Peggy, if y'all'd like to join us, Michelle, if you'd join us, and, uh, we'll let the kids watch, see, uh, grandparents in action. Okay, I'm gonna start out by telling the Johnson family a story. As I would travel between, uh, we have Banks and Sherman and Dennison as well. So, as I would travel up and down Highway 75, this is 2000-ish, I would see this one single yellow bulldozer going back and forth, back and forth. And, uh, it happened to be the owner, uh, or the owners are with us tonight, Tom and Peggy Johnson, and what they were doing is leveling out their land for our future development. We, none of us knew, had any, had any idea of what the future development is going to be, but, uh, every time I went by, I said, "Man, that's gotta be a tough job going back and forth and back and forth every day." And then finally, one day, things started happening, uh, on the northeast and northwest corners of 691 and 75, and we're so proud to have, uh, Tom Johnson Properties and Covenant Development as, uh, the owners of that property. And, um, as we developed, I'm gonna have Jared Johnson speak to you as well to help, help you understand a little bit more about, uh, the Texoma Health Foundation Park. But, um, Mr. Johnson worked with Tony Kai, our Economic Development Group, the City of Dennison, and the mayor, uh, to help land a new company in Dennison that was looking for new space. The company was Sigda Insurance, and we recall that building being a Lone Ranger on the top of that hill for several years. And, uh, what a great addition to the City of Dennison, and, uh, a number of employees were able to come and, and work in, uh, the City of Dennison, and, uh, we were so proud of that. And then, not too much later, um, the Texoma Medical Center, which was our nonprofit hospital on the north edge of town, began to think of growth and how we're going to better serve our community. So, that was about 2005. We began those discussions at the hospital. In 2006, we hired a consultant, interviewed several dif- seven different hospital companies, and ended up choosing United Health Services. And on January the 1st, 2007, Texoma Medical Center became Universal Health Services. And from that transaction, um, our previously, previously known as the Texoma Medical Center Foundation became the Texoma Health Foundation, now known as Texoma Community Foundation. There was a large amount of money that transferred from Universal Health Services to us, uh, for the right to, uh, build a new hospital in Dennison, and there were some negotiating back and forth. And finally, Covenant Development, Tom Johnson Properties made a deal with, uh, Universal Health Services, and the new hospital was born at the corner, the northeast corner of 691 and 75. And that hospital opened in, in what they had told us it would in three years. At the end of 2007, eight, nine, two, at Christmas 2009, Texoma Medical Center opened, uh, a new eight-story hospital building, and the first six floors were finished out, and we had a shell, uh, shell floors on seven and eight, and it wasn't long after that that those floors were also finished out. So, that the sale of the hospital, UHS, created the funding for Texoma Health Foundation. And then, um, in about 2012, there was enough activity going on, on the northeast and northwest corners, that, uh, we worked with, uh, Tom and his, his family, uh, to create a TERS or a tax reinvestment zone, uh, for this area. It has 727 acres, and it, listen to this, in 2012, the base value of that taxable revenue, or the taxable properties and on those corners, that the tax value was $7.2 million. That was in 2012. And guess what it was in 2024? Any wild guesses? 14, 15? No. The taxable value at, at the end of 2024 was $255 million. Since 2012 to 2024, in 12 years, an amazing amount of commerce and development has occurred on that corner, and, uh, it was all done with the, uh, great, uh, assistance of the Johnson family and, uh, then the Texoma Health Foundation. So, uh, in 2015, uh, the Texoma Foundation Park officially opened, and I'd like to invite Jared to give us, uh, some background on how we became, uh, the public-private owner, uh, public-private partnership owners of the Texoma Health Foundation. So, Jared, we're gonna give you a shot.
Thank you, Mayor. It's, uh, good to be here and to, to celebrate 10 years of funding, which would represent probably 13 or 14 years of negotiation and planning, my friend. So, well, you're a tough one, too. That's why we didn't get it done quite on time. So, I'm just kidding, kinda, sorta. No, it was, it was really, really good memories through that. And, um, but the vision was really pretty simple. It was going to be to do a, uh, a project that the City of Dennison's never accomplished before, never did, tried to tackle anything of this size, that the vision wasn't a park, it was a recreational facility for, for people of all ages with a focus on health and wellness for all ages. It wasn't another ball field. It, it has that, um, but certainly was so much more, including the programming. The vision also included being the premier destination for quality. You won't find one of the, at the time, you wouldn't find one of these in North Texas, other than there's a really nice facility in Grapevine. To this day, I've yet to find another facility in North Texas that is at this quality. And the last part of that vision was that we knew we had a very capable city staff that was gonna be able to maintain it after it was open, because you don't get to just open it and, and it stay in that condition, and we're proud of the city staff and all they've done through that. But, the purpose of being able to do that, the way we were able to do that through the public-private partnership, was really the three angles. It was the local taxpayer, it was the Health Foundation, and it was the developer, Mr. Johnson and his family. And through those three, three parties, three stakeholders, we were able to achieve that vision in a very successful way. Um, I think the numbers are, are close to this. Renee, correct me, but it, I think, at the end of the day, the Dennison taxpayer was able to get a $17 million amenity at that time for $4 million of taxpayer dollars. That doesn't happen without good partners. And it wasn't easy to get to the day that we were able to break ground, but we were able to do it. The other part of that, that we would use at the time in reflecting is that this was gonna be a place that legitimately may touch nine generations of community members, because of how long these can last if they're well taken care of. And I think we're on, if you consider, four generations or so have used it since it opened, and maybe a fifth one has started using it, we're well on our way to that vision here 10 years in. And the amenity will be for this region and this community long after we're all gone. But, Mr. Johnson and Peggy, thank you. Michelle, thanks for your leadership during that time, and continue as the Texoma Community Foundation and the board and city staff are ensuring that this amenity is what it is today. Thank you.
Jared was the mayor of Dennison at that time, and was also a member of the board of the Texoma Health Foundation, now Texoma Community Foundation. So, um, we felt like, well, the role for THF was that they helped us retire 10 years of, of debt, or a debt over 10 years by their annual payments. And I got a call early this year from Michelle, and she says, "Robert, I've got a big check for you." And she was really smiling because it was check number 10 of 10, and she was so proud to, to, uh, to deliver it to us, and we appreciate that. So, uh, we have these guests here tonight, uh, to, uh, bestow upon them what we call a moving forward and giving back award. So, let me first, uh, tell you, uh, read you the resolution that started this award. Okay, it says it's Resolution Number 3887, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Dennison, Texas, creating the Moving Forward Giving Back Award for outstanding citizens and finding and determining the meeting at which this resolution is adopted to be open to the public as required by law. Whereas, the City of Dennison has been blessed with the citizens who care about the community and wish to make Dennison an outstanding place to live, work, and play. And, whereas, the City Council of Dennison desires to identify and recognize outstanding citizens who have made a significant contribution to, or have had a positive impact on the citizens of the community. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Dennison, Texas, Part One, that the City Council of the City of Dennison does and hereby set forth the criteria for selection under this program to include two key elements. First, individuals considered for recognition must reside or own a business in the City of Dennison. And second, individuals must be recognized for outstanding contributions toward the betterment of the community involving any number of areas, including, but not limited to, community services, volunteer work, sports, education, valor, and other things. Should exceptional circumstances arise in which it would be appropriate to recognize an individual who resides outside the City of Dennison, these guidelines shall provide the necessary flexibility to consider such nominations. The Moving Forward Giving Back Award shall be presented to a, at a city council meeting or other appropriate city-related meeting and event. Part Two, that it is hereby officially found and determined that the meeting at which this resolution is passed is open to the public, and that the public notice of time, place, location, and purpose of said meeting was given as required by law. On a motion by the council member Hanley, seconded by council member Beck, the above foregoing resolution was passed and approved at a regular meeting of the City of Dennison, Texas, on the fourth day of January 2016. Motion carried unanimously, and this was, uh, at a regular meeting on January the 4th, 2016. It was signed by Jared Johnson, Mayor of Dennison, and attested by Carrie Jones, City Secretary. So, that's where, that's how we came up with this award. The City Council, Jared and the City Council, back in 2016, uh, gave reason to recognize outstanding people of our community who've gone above and beyond, uh, themselves in giving, uh, back to this great community. So, the first award, that's gonna be the last award. The Johnson family. It's our honor to present the Moving Forward and Giving Back Award to the Johnson family, 2025. Peggy and Tom. is Michelle Lemming. Michelle, Moving Forward and Giving Back, awarded to the community, uh, Texoma Community Foundation, August 2025. And last but not least, Mr. Jared Johnson, a friend who taught my, my two boys how to mow lawns back when they were 10, 11, 12 years old. He also coached them in Little League Boys, I mean, Little League. We, we played against him in the boys' club and never won a game. I think when Jared was the opposing coach, we, um, and Aaron Thomas, Councilman Thomas, said he never won a game against him either. So, uh, anyway, and then on to Pony League. Uh, he was our coach for our boys and a great role model. As, as it's turned out, uh, Jared Johnson is a great friend, but he's also a great leader and a true, a true asset to our community. So, Jared, you get, in addition to, oh, no, I won't say that. I was gonna tell you Chick-fil-A gift certificate. You were gonna, you get a copy of this resolution. And, uh, Tamara, would you like to come up here and join? Jared's wife is here tonight, Tamara, and, cause she's gonna have to hold one or the other of these. I'm not sure which one she's gonna hold. So, anyway, and then to Jared Johnson, Moving Forward and Giving Back, awarded to Jared Johnson, 2025. Thank you, Jared. So, that was the fun part. So, now we get to get down to business. Thank you all for being here. We appreciate it. So, now we're down to item number three, uh, public comments from our, for our agenda. Citizens may speak on action items listed on the agenda. A respect to speak, or a request to speak card should be completed in return to the city clerk prior to arrival of this council meeting, reading, uh, reaching the public comment section of the agenda. Citizen comments are limited to three minutes unless otherwise required by law. Comments related to public hearings listed below, if any, will be heard at that specific time that the hearing starts. Item four on the agenda is the consent agenda, and, uh, we will be, uh, looking for a motion for all but item E of this consent agenda. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented with the exclusion of item E.
There's a motion by Councilman Redwine, second by Councilman Thomas. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right. And secondly, uh, at this time, Councilman Thomas, uh, will excuse himself for the meeting. It's 6:21, and, uh, will take up item E. And the reason Mr. Thomas is excusing himself is because he's employed by one of the parties in item E. So, uh, on item E, uh, looking for a motion to receive a report, hold a discussion, and take action on the interlocal agreement between the City of Dennison and Grayson College regarding waterline relocation related to Grayson College and their expansion currently under construction. Is there a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve the interlocal agreement between the City of Dennison and Grayson College regarding waterline relocation related to Grayson College's expansion project currently under construction, and authorize the interim city manager to execute the same, subject to final legal review and approval.
We have a motion by Mayor Protem Adams, a second by, uh, Pastor Thorne. Any other questions or comments?
Yes, sir.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, all opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Councilman Thomas, if you can hear us, come on back. Thank you. All right. We're now down to item number five, the public hearings. Uh, item A, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on an ordinance to rezone approximately 250 acres of land, also known as, uh, the old Johns Manville Track on the north edge of Dennison. And, uh, Ms. Tate?
I think you were expecting Ms. York.
I, I was getting ready to read Diane York, and, uh, you tricked me just a bit, so, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This evening, we are putting before you a PD to rezone the area formerly known as the JM site. The applicant has requested that we table the item until the September 2nd meeting, which is a Tuesday. I had to double-check that. So, I will request that you, uh, open the public hearing and table the item until the September 2nd meeting.
Very well. Thank you, ma'am. This is a public hearing and is declared open for anyone present who wants to speak for or against the item. Hearing none, seeing none. The hearing is now tabled and post-toned until September the 2nd, 2025. So, that's it for that one. Uh, next item is item number, oh, sorry.
Yeah, we, we need a motion, um, to table and continue, and the motion should include to September 2nd at 6:00 PM specifically.
So, is there a motion to table, uh, to September the 2nd at 6:00 PM?
Mayor, I move to table the public hearing to the city council meeting held on September 2nd, 2025 at 6:00 PM.
Aye, second.
It's a motion by Mayor Protem Adams, a second by Councilman Redwine. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item number six, items for individual consideration. Uh, Director of IT, Mr. Mark Christopher, if you'd come up and, uh, tell us about a change in our fiber internet service, please, sir.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for your consideration. This agreement is for critical fiber internet and ethernet services for the city. With approval, Blue Peak will provide fiber ethernet and internet services to 12 city buildings for business network requirements. Services include interconnectivity of 12 locations, necessary backup routes, and two internet delivery points. This request is funded within budget. Staff recommends approval to enter into a 60-month agreement in the amount of $720,000 to be made in monthly payments of $12,000 each, with Blue Peak for fiber connectivity services, and authorize the interim city manager to execute the agreement. And I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Christopher? If not, any discussions from the council? Seeing none, is there a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve entering into the Blue Peak Business Agreement Contract Number 2025 dash 0087 for the fiber internet services on 60-month terms in the amount of $12,000 monthly for a total of $720,000, and authorize the interim city manager to execute the same.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's a motion by Councilman Thomas, a second by Mayor Protem Adams. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. And, um, item B for, under six B, receive a report, hold a discussion, and take action on an agreement, uh, between the City of Dennison and Conduit Architecture and Design LLC.
Mayor and Council, um, we held, uh, opened up for bids or proposals, if you will, from different architectural firms. I believe we had 11 that submitted, uh, for the design work on the fire station number four up in the northwest quadrant by Preston Harbor, and interviewed three of those firms, and, uh, got down to the final two, and Conduit is the one that we selected to come back to us for the design work. This is a total of $700,000, uh, for the design work, and that will get us to about a year from now when they will complete that, and we'll have a set of plans and specifications that are bid-ready at that point, so that once funding becomes available to build the facility, then we'll have the, have the plans laying on shelf. So, uh, we're looking forward to working with them. They're out of McKinney, and they do a lot of fire station work, and, uh, we feel like they're gonna be a, a great contractor for us to use.
Thank you. Any questions for the city manager?
I've got a quick question for Bobby.
Okay.
In our, in my, uh, we generally assume 3% for architecture, 3% for the engineering side. So, if I'm looking at this as a budget relative to future expectations for the city, are we looking at a 10 to $15 million, uh, station four build cost expectation?
Uh, actually, probably more around nine to 10. Uh, that's the estimate that they gave us as we put it together. So, uh, and we had estimates as high as 15 million, but they came in between nine and 10, so.
And that's all cost that the city citizens will bear, or is there any revenue or cost shared associated with the Preston Harbor development?
No, that's all ours. Their, their association, or their help with that was they give us, donated us 3.6 acres to build a fire station down, so we have the property available.
And Station Four is required to keep our tier-one status, uh, with the fire, uh, system in the city today?
That's correct.
And you anticipate that, uh, that is, that $10,000 future forward-looking budget expectation is within our current budget, or, uh, exceeds our current budget for future costs?
It, it exceeds our current budget that we have right now. Of course, uh, once we start seeing some rooftops come up out there, that will help build that budget so that we can finance this and go forward.
But there is an outcome where the future rooftops and Preston Harbor development that contribute to our applicable taxes are behind schedule, and therefore, our cost of construction will be borne by the citizens.
It, that's a possibility. It's just gonna be on timing of when we started and, uh, what they're doing out there. They're supposed to break ground next month, so.
As we look forward to our budget discussion here in the next couple of weeks, uh, to hedge against that risk, are there costs associated with tax increase, uh, or decrease conversation associated with Fire Station Four that would be pertinent to our ability to maintain the tier-one status?
There are, uh, there's some different options on tax increase to look at, but it does not include Station Four at this time.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you, Josh. Any other questions for Mr. Attaberry? All right. Is there a motion for item 6B?
Mayor, I move to approve the agreement between the city of Dennison and Conduit Architecture and Design LLC for architectural and engineering services for the new fire station number four to be located inside the Preston Harbor development and authorize the interim city manager to execute the same, subject, subject to final legal review and approval.
We have a motion by Mayor Protem Adams, a second by Councilman Redwine. Any other discussion, questions, comments? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously, and we will have no need for an executive session this evening, so the time is 6:31 p.m., and this meeting in beautiful downtown Dennison, award-winning downtown Dennison, is now, is now complete. Thank you.